About seven o'clock, we call a meeting to order. Additions to the agenda, any from the councilors? Now, we have one to add, 7-7, Sewa requests for services. So, 7-7. Any other, anything else? If not, somebody wish to move the... George Lee moves the agenda as amended. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Any questions on any of the...
One correction. 6.5 in the preamble. The town completed the filing process for a new community peace officer. I think it should be...
Well, yeah, we should probably do that.
It kind of gives it one impression.
Yes. Thank you for that, Paul.
No problem.
Okay, anything else on the... Hearing none, somebody wish to move the minutes?
Move the minutes.
Paul moves the minutes as amended. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to 4.1, Mr. Shear. For yours.
You got here in time.
Just in time.
I won't hold your time long, you guys, but this is back to utilities on vacant commercial property. Commercial properties that are not owned or occupied, that are occupied by renters, are usually valued on the market if you're trying to sell them, on what the return is on them, like what the income is. And your current thing that you do on utilities, I understand it on garbage pickup because there's wages and some pretty considerable ongoing costs. But what I'd like to talk to you about tonight is the sewer and the water. If there's any way that you can go back, I think you had a previous system. If you shut off water to a commercial or a residential site, there was a fee to shut it off and then turn it back on. And now you don't do that, you just keep it going?
There's still a fee to turn it off.
And you still get the monthly fees?
Yes.
Okay. Make the fee bigger or do something because that is really negatively affecting the value of a commercial property, especially if you're trying to sell the thing. For example, it's soon going to be vacant when the dentist moves out of there. The income from the rest, from the two sites that are still occupied might be a couple thousand a month. If you take away, each bay commercially is charged, I don't know, those utility bills probably average 200 on each spot. Sometimes they're higher, sometimes they're lower when they're occupied. And to continue doing that when they're unoccupied affects the value of the property. If the income's 2,000 a month and you're paying 200 a month and there's two vacant spots which you're paying these utility costs for, that really drives down the value of the property, probably 15%. I'm just, yes, if there's still two vacant places there. And I'm just talking the water and the utility portion. Garbage, I have, I understand that one. And I've got commercial garbage pickup. The town's not picking up any garbage from any site there. But I'd like you to look at reinstating your policy for turning off and on water. You don't have to turn it off and on sewer, but I'd like you to look at that one as well. Because let's say you got two vacant spots in there. Those services are not being used. There's not a huge cost like there is with the garbage still ongoing. You get your money upfront, say you charge 250, 300, even $400, whatever, to turn off and turn on that water. In a, in a commercial operation, when you rent one of those bays out, you hopefully get a triple net lease where the tenant pays all of those expenses, right? Even though you guys still send it to the owner, I understand that one too. But the, but the tenant pays when there's somebody in there. Somebody not in there, if you did the, increased the turn off and turn on fee and you charge, say, $300 or $400 for each bay, you're going to get your service fees upfront. And then if someone, if you can rent the place, say six months in, hopefully you've got the, and then the services are being used, there's water and sewer being used. So the fees is another fee to hook it back up. But it doesn't affect the value of the property, okay? You follow what I'm saying?
You know, like on the sewer, one is a prime example of, well, we take out a, build a $3 million sewage lagoon. 1 million was the province, 1 million was the feds, and 1 million is ours. We debentured the $1 million over 25 years. We split it up over all the number of utilities that we have in the community. And that's how we came up with the figure that we charge on a monthly basis. So your philosophy would be is that now we would charge upfront amount of money for water and sewer for shut off, let's say $5,000 to shut it off and $5,000 to hook it back up. You know, so then we'd calculate that money that we, from there and divide it amongst the sewer and the water, is that what you're kind of talking about?
No, no.
Because we still have this debenture that we, we have to pay. And we calculated on how many sewer or...
Yeah, but instead of getting, getting, what would the water be for each bay? I think it, I think if you're, if there's no water being used, I'm still getting a steady fee of $50 or $60 each month.
36.
Okay, double that, two bays empty.
Yeah.
Okay, add sewer on, what's that base?
21.
20, yeah, 20.
Okay, add that in, double that for two vacant bays. Charge $300.
Well, I was thinking more like $4,000 or $5,000 to make it, you know, to make it economical for us to make it work because...
How do we continue making that debenture payment is what Tom has asked.
Well, why do you need $4,000 or $5,000 to replace 2,700 a month or 37?
Well, no, I just picked that figure because, you know, we have to make, come up with some figure, you know, whether it's 500 or 100 or 5,000, what's, you know, I mean, there has to be a, some method of coming up with a calculation to pull the figure out of the sky and calculate. We don't know the...
Where'd you get it when you had it previously though, when it was $250 to turn the water off?
I assume they pulled it out of the sky, same thing. So that's partly why we, we have felt that it was fairer to bring it back onto a realistic number and calculate it on the exact numbers that we have, you know. So as we add, you know, and the numbers change a little bit, but we lose one being one. I mean, we've got, we've got some...
What you're doing though is affecting, really affecting the value of the place. You try to sell a commercial property and if it's not somebody in there that's taking on those expenses as a tenant.
Right.
Man, like I said, you're knocking the price of my building down by about $30,000. Whereas if you took, if 12, say 12 months, or take 14 months, times whatever these fees are, and make that your turn off fee, and make that also your turn on fee.
Right.
If in two years that place is still vacant, we got a bigger problem than, than what, right? So you're, the town's ahead of the game, Tom, on those fees.
So if we, we use your figure and we'll come out and say it's going to, a year at $36 a month, times 12 is, you know, $300 or $400 approximately, well, it's $410. And then the water or sewer at $21 a month, that's another, you know, $2,000 or $243. So $500 in a year. So we say, well, you know, to make it economical, we're going to charge you, you know, $700. Two months later, you want to turn back on.
You're ahead of the game because you've got $700.
And you don't think that there's going to be people that own a commercial piece of property come back and say, oh, poor me, poor me, poor me, you know, you've charged me, you know...
Well, not me because that's the way it was.
Okay.
And I'm going to try to sell that building, right?
No, 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 I was just trying to get my hand around your analysis on it. I mean, you know, you're in the insurance business.
But fees are fees, Tom. I don't see someone coming back and complaining and trying to get part of that fee.
Like you're in the insurance business, Bob, where I came in, took out insurance on my car and six months later I decided I'm not going to drive my car anymore. I want to take the insurance off. I don't get anything back for this first six months I had in it.
Not the six months that you used up, but if you've only used up four of the six, you do get a refund. And I'm not asking for a refund. I'm saying these are fees to turn off and turn on. You take your chances. If I get a tenant in in two months and I had to pay a $600 fee, well, that's just the, you know...
Okay, no, okay. The fees aren't to turn water and off and on. The fees that we charge are for the distribution system and the collection system.
Right, but I'm talking about, but I'm saying put a fee in now in place of, for vacant commercial properties. Because otherwise, your system is really affecting the value of that property when it's up for sale to the tune of $15,000, $20,000, maybe $30,000. And you've got a real estate guy here, he may be able to shed some light on it.
Okay.
I mean, the system, I don't know if your system worked before when you had it, $250 fee to turn water off and on. I don't know how, you know.
Yeah, we never...
You had to bring in, I call it the marginal because people weren't paying utilities.
Well, that, that was when we changed it from what went to the renter to the landlord. It was whatever you want to call it. That was because we got, the community, the town of Vulcan got burnt big time with, you know, back debts for...
Yeah, you told me $10,000 or something.
Absentee, you know, renters. And, and we had no recourse on that. The only recourse we have is on the landlord themselves, period.
But with my suggestion here, there's no risk to the town. They're actually getting maybe a year, two years' worth of these utility ongoing costs upfront in the turn off and turn on fees.
So are you suggesting that you have a choice, that you do it the way you want or the way we have already, and then that way...
Well, I don't know how you could work that, I don't know how you could work that one. Maybe there is a way to work it with having a choice, but...
Because not everyone's going to be as open as you to want to pay...
Wanting these fees.
Yeah, the fees.
Yeah, well...
I do, if I can, Mr. Merritt, I do want to clarify. It has never been more than $35 to turn water on or off at a property involved.
I thought it was $250 or...
30, 35, it used to be, and we upped it to 37, I believe.
Okay, so if you're going to change that to 500, and I'm willing to pay it, because I don't see a tenant in sight for either of these two vacant bays I'm going to have. And I know it's really affecting the value of my building.
But it's the vacancy, not the utility bill.
Pardon?
It's the vacancy that's affecting me.
And the utility bill is affecting the valuation of the property. I don't think it would, it would affect residents the same at all. Right, it's not the same at all. Because again, how you, you don't value a house on what its income is. You value a commercial, non-owned or occupied property by its income.
And it's based on the number of bays.
Yeah, which doesn't really matter, one bay, four bays. There's only one water line in there, I'm getting four water charges. I mean, I'm, you know, and give me four charges, give me four $500 charges if the bay, if the building's completely vacant. And I'd rather pay that and try to sell that empty building than have these, have a negative cash flow on it. How's that going to affect its value?
Okay, any other questions from both?
Yeah, yeah. I imagine you guys maybe quiz a while if I'm right or wrong on how you, on what it's doing to this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And while I go, you want an odd joke, it's not my joke, it's Harry Harter's. You're walking down the street, a crowd of clowns comes around the corner at you through the path. What do you do? You go for the juggler.
So you tell us after you leave.
Okay, thank you for the iteration, and I hope you can come up with something.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to correspondence, number 5-1. Any questions on Albert Park and Rex? Okay.
Is Bonnie attending?
Yeah, that's what I see. Okay, move on to 5-2, Mr. Swan's letter.
Clarification needed.
Yeah, any clarification?
I think I do, I wasn't quite sure. I didn't think everything came to council to go back.
There's a misunderstanding there of what the process is. That is for any item, the way that that's described would be any item well outside the budget.
Okay.
Regular budgeted items are dealt with through department heads, the same as any, any other department. And for further clarification, the article in there that he discussed about this year's Vulcan was because we are still setting up accounts is why there was a delay.
And we're also going to remember this, this year is a bit of a transition. You know, year from what we were doing in the past to what we're doing right now. So the transition is, it's kind of nice to see that obviously he's got some information from somewhere. So obviously he's watching or reading or whichever. And, but there is that transition that we have to go through of how it's going to work, so... Any other questions or concerns on that one?
My suggestion, maybe have Bonnie write a letter explaining.
All right, you, you need a motion on that?
Just, and we'll just direct administration to respond to the...
Yeah, because it came to the mayor and council, so, yeah. So if you want to...
I don't want any motion.
Okay.
It wasn't a dad letter.
Oh, no, it was...
A concern.
Yeah, a concern.
It's a misunderstanding.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, we'll just do some clarification and then it was presented to council.
Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, moving on to 5.3.
It didn't come through as well as it could have. It was a very, very nice card from Forrest thanking us for taking counsel for your letter to Merle for his retirement.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to the food truck fundraiser. So we don't have to issue a street closure because we've got...
Just for council's information.
Okay, moving on to 5.5, the whispering greens stop signs report. No question?
Sounds like he's working with the homeowners association or whatever it's called, sorry.
It sounds like most of the traffic is coming from the construction. Digital speed signs may help. They certainly have on the computer.
Okay, so need a motion to file the correspondence. Love moves, correspondence. Any question on last motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the financial reports, cash statement.
Is this where we are? It should be at this time for our yearly expenses.
Yes, absolutely.
Since June 35th was just here, we better hold, so...
Approximately $2.5 million available cash for the projects we have.
Okay, any questions on this one here at all? Somebody wish to move it? Nora?
I agree with that. Any chance?
Any question on Nora's motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
That's carried.
Okay, moving on to year-to-date. Any questions on any of these categories?
I guess same question that Nora has, are, where are we supposed to be?
Well, supposed to be is a hard question to answer, but yeah, no, we're, we're in line. We have basically 900,000 revenue yet to bring in. And you can see the majority of that is tied to our utilities, so here's 700 just in utilities. So the 200 is outstanding tax and a few things like that. And pretty decent shape budget-wise on a $6 million budget for expenses.
I think your guys' comments and questions, you know, sometimes we think that they're trivial, you know, the way that Nora asked or Paul just asked this one. But I think it's really quite important that we really do, we put a lot of faith in our staff in giving these numbers to us. And it doesn't hurt for us to challenge these numbers if we think there's a discrepancy. And, and just to stay on top of them, to help them out and assist them so that there's not any thoughts of skullduggery that potentially could be going on somewhere in the system. And, but anyway, just so you, it's, I think it's important that you kind of, we look at these and put, put merit in it because...
I imagine Nora went through before she has heard I've gone through. Nothing jumps out.
No, I, and that's good.
That's my, my second check is to ask.
And that was the biggest goal of getting these, so that they're the same month to month, so that you guys know exactly what you're looking at. And it starts right from when you start the budget process. You see exactly the same numbers all the way through every time you look at them.
Except they start declining.
Well, the expenses go up through the year and the revenue goes down, but that's just the nature of what we do.
Okay, so I need questions or queries on this at all, or? And somebody wish to move it? Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, moving on to new and unfinished business, 7-1, it is the Shunard Arch. Lovey? I know it's not much of an increase, but it's still 7%. You know, considering that everybody else is trying to keep their stuff down as low as possible. I appreciate it's not a big amount of money, but...
It is spread over four years, Mr. D. Percent and a half times four, we're six and change.
Yeah.
So it's, it's in line, I think.
They're more than happy to go through some of the stuff in their program.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 and we had them at the communication meeting and, but you know, it is one that we got to be careful that if somebody does catch wind of what it looks like and, you know, pull it up, you know, that we can justify it and how it calculates out. So it's not a big number, that's for sure.
It might have been better for them to say it's this over the term and so much per year so that people would have realized it was broken down.
And that's why, as part of my analysis, I tried to break it open a little bit for you so you have a really good, it's fairly consistent for four years.
Yeah.
And I was just at another meeting before this one, and the cost of living for Canada for 2018 was 1.6, so...
Yeah, so it's, so it's in line. But I mean, but it's just, just so that we're kind of on, on knowing that it's, it's a...
And we get stuff from the street?
Well, you know, or we get another letter, you know, we can justify how we, you know, come up with our numbers and how, you know, how we question our numbers and make sure that, like I said, everybody's doing their due diligence to keep it on. Okay, so we need, going to do...
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve of this one? Nora?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure whether you had or not.
Yeah, I wasn't voting just yet.
No, 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 I just... Okay, so Nora moves this. Any question on Nora's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, moving on to the RCMP request. It's very straightforward, very, a lot of chunk of asphalt cleared off with that street sweeper.
So, the Karkaldi aerodrome, is that the old airport?
The old airport, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know what it's called.
So the public works looked at it, they felt that, you know, they just drive out with a street sweep, street sweeper, clean it, come back and... And if we build it out at our normal rate that we have calculated, it would be approximately $320.
Do we see any potential hazards out there on the runway? Just, I mean, for our own equipment? No, no, it's, it's pretty open. There's just debris, gravel and things that have accumulated over the years. And of course, nobody's ever gone out there to sweep it off, so... But I mean, no big chunks or holes that they could be doing.
I can't imagine if they're going to do skids and slides, if they haven't, RCMP haven't looked at that too, you know, to make sure that it needs to, I would assume they'll, they'll pick the best chunk and say it's going to be, you know, here.
The reason why they picked it is they actually analyzed the skid marks and that, so it's a fairly clean chunk.
So I assume, again, you know, that must be fairly nice enough for them. Maybe they would like some debris too, I don't know.
They are planning on bringing people in for this, so of course our, our local businesses will hopefully benefit from, from the lunches and hopefully the guys staying for the, for the term of the course, so... I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Any question on last motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Okay, the next one is Kim's favorite.
Yeah, I got back from holidays and received this hit voice. Everybody knows that we have the Center Street Crossing CPR replaced it this year. And we are responsible for all costs on that crossing because of course we asked for the crossing to be there many years ago. So we're responsible for 100% of the costs. So they were kind enough to voice this as quickly as they could to the entire amount of...
They're responsible for Second Street. Second Street, that's why it's never been, hasn't been done.
That's why we don't get charged and that's why it doesn't have arms or anything else. If we are to ask for the, to be updated.
Yeah, that we're responsible. And same with the one on the, you know, Elizabeth or Conmere. They, they charge it back to transportation.
Because it falls on Elizabeth Street?
Yeah, because it's a secondary highway.
Yeah, same with Karkaldi Crossing, the Highway 23.
I was thinking that this was both of them.
No, this is just Center Street.
Wasn't it normally about 85 last time?
I don't remember what it was last time, what it cost us.
How often do they do it?
Well, not often enough, obviously, because it's sometimes, like the last one, they used those rubber pieces and it didn't work as well as they anticipated, I think. So this one, they did it, changed the ties, the steel, the ballast, the whole work, so...
My understanding through this is through, if, if all protocols were followed to the letter, they would have given us three years' notice and allowed us to try to budget. And that certainly, that didn't happen this time. Of course, as you guys are aware, because you were sitting in this room, what was supposed to be happening, it didn't even happen what was supposed to, so...
But there's another example why we still try and have a little bit of money left in contingencies so that we can pay for some of these things that happen that we don't anticipate, you know, or come along that we want to...
Sure knocks the heck out of it, doesn't it?
It does, it does really affect it. But, but that's an example, why not budget 100%, you know, nickels and dimes and not have any pennies leftovers?
If I might suggest, when you budget, maybe raise contingency reserves somewhat. Not a huge amount.
Yucky that.
Well, budgets will be coming up here soon, so...
It is, we, we did raise it last year up to two, up to the 200s.
I'll make the motion to pay, they said we have to pay or we have to pay against.
Thank you, George Lee.
73 feet over, 140, wow.
Yeah, it is, it is kind of a shocker, but you're right, you know, it is our responsibility and, and...
If, if we were allowed to do it with our own resources, it may have been cheaper. But then, of course, we're not allowed to work on our tracks as well.
Okay, any questions, comments on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's carried, Kim. Okay, approved.
Sorry, excuse me, did that come out of contingency?
Yes.
Okay, so the next one is the proposed amendment to the bylaw number fourteen thirty-seven, which is Nancy's and Steve's. If you wanna, I'm not sure if you got any comments to make before we...
Nancy's not getting up, so she's not expecting the comments.
There's only one chair. Okay, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Steve Hardy, I'm one of the senior planners at Orsted, been there over twenty years. Having been out, been out to golf for a while, I feel in here on some tourney leaves back in the late eighties, very eight thousands. My whole shoulders was up here at that time, but it's nice to be here tonight. Ian had a conflict, he was covering a similar topic at Sound tonight that had a few more concerns or questions, I guess so to speak, there's something about Sound to help them all, so I'm here in this place tonight. So I guess in front of you, I've got a little bit of updates, some information for you here too, is that, as you're aware, October seventeenth, the federal legislation's come into place to legalize recreational cannabis and retail sales of that. So we've been working with most of our communities, trying to get them prepared and ready for that a bit. So Ian's been working with your municipal commission, I think you've been out to two meetings with them, and Nancy discussing it, we'll get some input from them, what third thoughts were of how to regulate this in your land use bylaw, which of course is something that becomes, becomes puts in your bylaw, depending on regulations put in there, the MPC will be likely deciding on the permits for that and decisions. So from that, they have put together a draft for some events for your bylaw to consider. And basically, the approach taken is to add the retail cannabis use as a discretionary use in your retail C one, your highway commercial C two, in industrial districts in the town. So being discretionary, it's on a permit, there's a circulation and public notice to adjacent landlords, that sort of a thing, decisions can be appealed to the appeal board, that type of a thing, with some basic criteria to go along with that. Just as a precursor, you're probably aware, but there's really a two-stage process, it's kind of like liquor stores for the retail sales, the Alberta Gaming Liquor Commission is the one that's overseeing it. The retail operator has to obtain a local development permit from the municipality and then they also need the provincial approval. The provincial approval in itself is also kind of a two-stage process. One of their first stages is that they determine eligibility, so that means they do the security background check, make sure the person who's a, can be an operator, is not involved in criminal activity, doesn't have a criminal record, that sort of a thing. If they don't pass that first, then they're out of the game. If they complete the security background check, all those things that need to be done, some of the other application requirements that the Alberta Gaming Liquor Commission has, then if the municipality is okay with proven development permit, then if it meets all the criteria from the province as well, then they can get a license to dispense and sell retail recreational cannabis. So that's kind of the process. So if you don't get the provincial, don't get the rest, you'll get both of them, if you're missing one of them, you can't be in operation, you can't have the retail sales. So it's not too, too unlike how liquor stores are licensed, other than a little bit more extensive on the background check and that sort of thing, criminal element for the security. So with that, what I guess was discussed, what your MPC looked at was the province, the Alberta Gaming Commission did come up with some basic criteria that they would apply in the absence of a municipality having certain standards in their bylaw. So for instance, they stipulated that a cannabis store has to be a minimum hundred meters away from a hospital, a hundred meters away from a school that's designated as a school or school reserve land where the schools cooperate. The municipality can go more, greater or less than that standard because they put the number in, so you could say seventy-five meters in there and then that's what they'll go by, you can say three hundred meters is the setback we want and then that's what they would go by. In the absence of a number, then they'll default to their hundred meters, that's kind of across the board kind of thing. Most municipalities that, some that I've dealt with and some others you've seen in the Orske region, most have gone the route proposed here, the discretionary use in a commercial zone or two zones if they have a type of a thing, with anywhere from a hundred to three hundred meters of a setback, I would say probably most or at least half the more on, just with the default hundred meters. So what the, your MPC looked at here was the standards that's in front of you and there's a draft to the bylaw here, is basically putting it in those, allowing it as discretionary use in those three districts, that it would be prohibited within the hundred meter buffer area from schools and hospitals, so kind of the default hundred meters, no greater nor less. The hours of operation, you can also specify, the default hours of the province is from ten AM in the morning until two AM, so you can't sell outside those hours. We see in few municipalities, say eleven or noon until ten PM at night, so you can specify that. Your MPC, looks like they just went with the recommendation of the province, the default, the, what those hours are. And also that the number of stores are not restricted and will be determined by the market. So what that means is that your draft bylaw is not looking to separation distances between cannabis stores. So for instance, I don't, one of our Orske communities, they put in that they have, if there's more than one cannabis, we'd have to be three hundred meters apart from each other, so they can't be right beside each other across the street from one, that's the separation distance. That's a little bit based on some recommendations that the Health Region came up with, just in their opinion, some of the research they've done, they say they like to see separation distances between cannabis stores, away from liquor stores, that sort of thing, because they say often people have addictions, problems, that sort of a thing. If all those uses are clustered together and liquor store beside cannabis store, that kind of enables the problem type of a thing, so if you make more difficult to separate those, it helps, I guess, for those types of situations. So there was some recommendations from the Health Region. So some municipalities, a few chose to incorporate that, many municipalities haven't had an odd, so it's totally up to you, whether you want to do those types of things. So it looks like in the discussions at the MPC, they said their recommendation was just to let the marketplace decide, not put those restrictions in. Now, I would say probably on a personal, my own opinion, and I guess as counsel, you guys will feel about how you feel about this. It's gonna be a major issue and you're gonna be able to run with these or, you know, so far the other day, the province announced they've had over eight hundred and some, I think eight hundred and thirty-one, something like that, applications for the retail stores in Salona, Alberta, and I'm not sure where they draw the line, Salona, Alberta, that includes Oka Tokes or that sort of thing, but they said in Salona, Alberta, they had, I think, thirty-one, thirty-two, something like that, but they're, we're all in the city of Lethbridge, so anywhere from Tabor, Cozmas Pass, any of them, there's been no applications made so far there. So I think just from a business point of view, when you're looking at a specialty product and that's all you can sell in the stores, you can't sell liquor in there with it, you can't sell bags of chips, you can't sell, it's only for the, for the cannabis and associated products maybe that they might allow, that, you know, just looking at the market of support, I mean, some of the small places like, places like Champion doesn't even have a grocery store, how, how is a cannabis store gonna be self-supporting, right, when you're paying rent and all those sorts of things? So, so it likely won't be a huge problem, but the bylaw's getting you in place here, so if somebody does come ask, or comes to town to apply for a permit, you have some standards there, criteria, saying, you know, maybe this is how, you know, I see it, so. So with that, I will just take a note that some of the information that came out to you, I just wanted to make note that there was a mission on the map that came out, that was then where showed the schools and with a hundred meter buffer, what they setback in relation to the commercial area zoning, that sort of thing. On the map that came out, the purple where your industrial zone land is, what that wasn't on there showing, so I brought out a new one here, but I'll leave here, but it shows you just where the purple is in relation to that. So where your schools are, they're far enough back from the commercial area, there's not a conflict, you do have the one school downtown, the Hope Beach School, that operates, and one of the things is that Ian said with, he was Nancy, you check with the region publisher just to check under plans for the school, if his plan's staying there, that sort of thing, and he thinks he has, so that does count as a school, whatever, so some of that does overlap, you know, for a half block or so in the commercial area up there. So it does affect a little bit of your commercial area. But for the other two main schools, they're outside your downtown area, so the hundred meter buffer is actually not a, not an issue, if you could go a hundred meters.
Okay, there's, there's an error on thirteen seven, just...
We just wanted to point out that the draft that everybody got had seventy-five meters, it's gonna be a hundred, I believe, was what you guys discussed.
Oh, so that, actually, that part is for the, for the cannabis production facility.
Okay.
A lot of cannabis for retail.
Okay.
So we actually look what came out.
Oh, that's right, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, the talent you guys really put in your bylaw, the medical cannabis production facility.
Right.
With, with the, with the change in the federal legislation here, that medical cannabis has gone by the wayside, so now the medical cannabis can also produce recreational cannabis, it's all one package now. So one of the things that Ian did here, which is in your package, if you look at, one of the recommendations also is to change the medical marijuana cannabis just to medical cannabis term, to change the medical marijuana production facility just now to cannabis production facility, because the standards and the setback is the same for it, it's medical and recreational now, so it's just some language change.
But, but is there any change on that, then, with the province taking over the, on the facility itself, is it seventy-five meters?
Yeah, so that part's not changed.
Okay.
So just on the retail part with the hundred meter is their standard. The province actually doesn't have on the production side a minimum, seventy-five comes from a federal...
Yours is less than the federal, right?
Seventy-five, so...
The federal's four hundred, that's about it.
Yeah, so it's the same thing, so if you put the number in your bylaw, you can go less than what the, than what the standard is specified.
Okay, well, it was just when I saw it there, when I first read it, it, I wasn't sure whether it changed, you know, with the hundred meters with the same...
As I understand, seventy-five is what you currently have, that part's not changing in the maintenance, that that was what was in the bylaw before, or in the current bylaw. So that's not supposed to change, unless that's something I'll look at, but that was just...
No, that's fine, I just thought, I was just questioning on, on...
For the hundred.
Was, with the hundred, you know, took...
Yeah, so basically, the cannabis production facility, the major change is just to change the name, to say it's medical and just to keep it called cannabis. A lot of the, there's almost two types of the cannabis, of the production facilities, some are like the greenhouse type, whatever, most of them, most applications we're seeing for new ones are applications we've seen up around Edmonton, that sort of thing, they're more in a enclosed building, that you, you can't even see, it's, you know, metal shop building looking type of thing, you can't even see inside, there's no sky, anything type of a thing. The feds also have some rules about security in the province as well, about how those are secured and all that sort of stuff as well. Yeah, so the only proposed amendment on that is just the name. But if you look at the bottom of the page under new, section fourteen, would be the retail cannabis stores, which outlines the criteria for that, municipalities can address parking signs, that sort of thing. Basically, it looks like your MPC is going by, you know, just using some of the similar retail standards you have in place already for parking and that's just the thing, nothing extra special, which most municipalities are doing, is it's a retail use, just like a grocery store or something else, whatever. So the only, I guess the only, you know, specific thing is maybe a little bit on the signage, pretty with these purpose signs, the province as well has some very strict criteria ruling regarding the signage and what you can advertise and say and all that sort of a thing. Basically, it's the name of the company or the business or the seller, but not, you know, not exceeding liquor stores of, you know, Budweiser stuff about, you know, mortal product kind of a thing, it's just saying what it sells. So I guess, yes, the main thing with yours is, is if you're looking at the MPC, suggestion is that those standards be put in place there that you see, and then it's just with the hundred meter setback. The MPC looked at, besides the hospital and the schools, looking at parks, but they decided their suggestion was to remove that, some municipalities have put that in. So the parks playground support is not included in the draft the MPC recommended to you, so that's up to you whether you want to include something like that or not, that's...
The reason we specifically said, after much discussion, said not to worry about an exclusion zone around parks and playgrounds, is they're not even close to the areas designated, so we've already excluded them by default. The only place that's close is Virginia Mitchell Park, and potentially one of the industrial users up there could sell a chunk of land, but we're still discretionary.
Well, the other thing, too, and policies are cyclical too, so if they come in, the parks there, they come later, they have to be far back or vice versa or whatever kind of a thing, so.
Sorry, we didn't feel parks were an issue.
Okay, any questions? Either did a great job or we're all sleeping here, so...
Well, trust me on the question, parks, it was a good hour.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if you guys get after, like I say, I personally don't think it's for most communities, it's gonna be a big issue just because the economics of it, that, you know, we gotta pay staff, pay rent, all that sort of thing, and the fact that, you know, there's, there's still a little bit of that, I don't think we want to call it taboo element about it, but some people will want to be seen in the small town going to, you know, and you can order it online through the mail from the province, so if somebody wants to keep their tamelosity, I mean, order through the mail, I mean, so...
Well, I think some of the restrictions that the provincial government has put on too, limits a municipality, what they can do, you know, with the hundred meter, you know, setback and, you know, some of the other rules, you can't, you know, sell, like I said, chips and pop and, you know, other things with it, so, you know, it's kind of a standalone type of facility itself, so, you know, it kind of ties the hands of a municipality to the group on one hand, but on the other hand, it, you know, makes it fair to slot...
And as, as far as the hours of operation are concerned, the marketplace is gonna decide that.
Do that, Tim.
If you're not selling anything from midnight to two AM, why would you pay staff for two hours or four hours, whatever it is?
Maybe the only time you sell.
We staff too.
Sorry, this is for Lyle and Paul. When you guys were discussing the parks, what about the solar park in terms of, because it is ideally family-based in terms of the usage, how does that fall into it?
But it fits, it's in that hundred meters from that school.
From the outreach.
Yeah.
Almost totally covered by that exclusion, so...
Okay, so it doesn't even need to have a story?
Yeah, so if you're out there, so it's completely, just that far corner and of course we have, we don't absolutely approve somebody to put a story in there.
And another thing on that one too, on sales, I mean, we're talking about sales, not use, you know, it's, it's an issue where, where can you apartment, build a facility or an office or, you know, you're gonna rent or sell product, that's gonna affect that, so.
Use is gonna have its whole, whole other discussion.
We know a place now from tonight's earlier meeting.
We know a place now from tonight's earlier meeting.
Maybe, yeah, yeah, there's a rental spot. Never thought that, Martin, why, why aren't you on the ball earlier?
We are still recording, maybe.
That's all right.
That's okay, Bob.
Yeah, so any other questions for? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to drive all the way up here and to ask some words of wisdoms.
So, just your guess, I guess now you can just give direction to Ian, if, you know, how you wanna move forward, if you wanna prepare a bylaw for some need, and, and go directly into that in the public, you know, hearing advertising post, that sort of thing.
So the recommendation that we put forward with, with your report was that council direct administration to prepare the amendments to the land use bylaw, the inclusion of retail cannabis as presented, and for the first reading to be at September twenty-fourth, which will allow time for advertising in open house, and hopefully have it in place, uh, before, if everything goes well, uh, it'll, it'll be in place before, I think, October seventeenth.
Even if not, I mean, there's still a process for somebody that wishes to open a retail outfit, uh, you know, they still have to do all their homework and get their license from the province.
And we'd recommend some municipalities, if that happens, just direct him and find the province to pass their eligibility and stuff, cause they say that takes two to four months, so by the time that happens, you likely have your bylaw in place, so it doesn't.
No, that's great, well, thank you very much, again, thank you for taking the time to come and wait and, yeah. Yeah, table moves, it's one of those, it's one of those moving things. Okay, any other thoughts or questions on this? Somebody wish to move the recommendations?
Okay, thank you.
Any question on Lyle's motion?
I just have one more, uh, how long did it take at MPC to decide this, was it more than one meeting, or just?
Two, two meetings. We're kind of looking at dates and saying, okay, what's our timeline, which is why we had the one on the fourth. And it was what, the last one was in, just over an hour, wasn't it?
Yeah, and it was almost going round and round. It was a lot of discussion on, we have it in the parks, and I think we were getting so, there was a, people were making decisions back and forth, like changing their minds, yes and no to parks. And then we just discussed it enough that, you know, we were thinking, it's not per consumption, it's where you would put it, and when. To sell. And, uh.
And we already defined where you could sell it.
Yeah, so it, it, you actually kind of made, in my opinion, a little more complicated than it needed to be, but at least we got some good discussion out there, so everyone was comfortable with, with the decision that we made. Am I correct?
Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Yeah, no.
That makes our job a lot easier.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions on Lyle's motion? If not, hold on, favorite, it's carried. Okay, moving on to the Lions Club Smooth Pool Building Project. Uh, because it's, it's a, uh, town facility, we have to have a motion, an official motion for council.
Really, when you look at it any time, if anybody fundraises on behalf of the town, they should have council approval to do that, so.
So we need an official motion. Georgely moves this. Any question on Georgely's motion? Hearing that, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to the next one, was seven six, Pristine Homes and Fairways of Advertising Request.
Hopefully, provided enough information between Henry's report and, uh, and the package, it's fairly straightforward. We do have funding, uh, available in our economic development portion of the operation budget, but because this is a unique thing, uh, we wanted to bring it to council for, uh, for your approval, cause there is substantial cost to partnering on this, but the benefits are all lined in there.
It does look like it's, um, really, um, leaning towards one developer, um, which is putting up fifty percent of the money, and then we're gonna put up the other fifty percent. But the huge advantage of any type of advertising is that it has its roll-off effect that affects everybody that's in it, so there is, um, the only other way you could go around this would be is to go to some of the other developers or landowners that have land, or, um, people that are selling, um, to see if they wanna hop in on a advertising campaign that would globally do the whole community. But this person is willing to put up fifty percent right now.
Well, we do try to do that with the home show, home garden show.
It's a workhouse.
Everybody's involved. I don't know if Henry's contributed the last couple of years or not, not sure now.
I don't think financially he's ever contributed. Years ago, we used to have, sometimes get a, some of the developers would help out with, um, manning the booth.
I would just like to see the benefit spread across everybody, but I'm not quite sure how to do that.
The weak residential sales market is not unique to Vulcan. It's happening throughout Alberta, like it's happening in Calgary, it's happening in Bathbridge, Madison, had Okatoks. We have a strong investor that we've worked with, uh, through our company who buys property, lots of property around through the county. And like he was saying, in Calgary, like half the restaurants are empty, and many of the, uh, businesses are going, oil businesses are going south because there's no pipelines up here. So, um, I appreciate what, uh, Mr. Court's trying to, to do here, uh, but being, I don't know if this is a, the solution. I mean, if, if he gets this, then, um, not that I would, should make missing realty do a campaign to get sell more houses in town, and, uh, ask the town to put half the bill for that. Know if that's really, uh, the market's tough right now.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments?
Who else do we have for builders up there, anyone that's doing a lot?
Well, I mean, there are quite a few people that own private lots up there that.
They just hired their own person to, to build, you know.
You know, Pat Wisner's got some, has a, if you like, slash developer, he owns some lots that are up for sale, and, um, I, I don't know what you classify as a developer period, whether these guys have here have put in money into infrastructure, whereas some of the rest haven't had to. Like, I mean, there's, like I said, there's some private ones that have bought land that had, um, they already could purchase the land, but they also purchased the, some of it, paid for some of the development on it. So, so I don't know where you, you draw the line between classifying a developer to become, you know, more than two lots, or is it three lots, or is it four lots, or?
This was, uh, Henry met with both Nancy and I to discuss this, and that's where this proposal came from, came from more, and Henry didn't do the best job kind of explaining it through his letter, but it isn't a realist, it isn't a real estate side of things, it was a strictly developer side. So like Tom, Pat Wisner, or anybody that owns a substantial amount of property in town, that's trying to stimulate the growth of that. That's where this stemmed from, but yeah, the, that's kind of where that, so I just wanted to clarify that, that was strictly from him, from a developer's.
Yeah, and I think truly wanting that development to be able to continue without him being able to sell houses is maybe as.
Now, and, and Lyle's right, I mean, there are, you know, three or four real estate companies that, you know, call Vulcan Home their base, or, you know, do advertising. Um, again, you know, some of them have gone to a pamphlet, you know, that they've done spearheaded or pushed to, to try and sell the community. This is the first one we've seen like this, I think, come to us this direction. We, um, as a community, have, you know, have discussed the, the home garden show slash, you know, how do we promote our community? Lyle's right, I mean, there's not a municipality in the province of Alberta that isn't heard feeling some degree of, of downturn. I mean, some of them still have some development going on, but some of that development was, you know, committed prior to the major turn down, and it's pretty hard to stop that, but, again, this is our first group that have come to us and come up with a process.
Just, just to note, uh, I do a report, uh, for sales on MLS, private sales, and that through Alberta Land Titles Registry. And from January first to the end of August, there's been twenty-seven residential sales in town, and an average sale price of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. His numbers were quite out on that report that he provided. So, and his places, they are very nice, I mean, I would love to sell them, but here in the higher end, I mean, in Calgary, these would be worth way more, but here at three hundred and seventy-five to over four hundred thousand dollars. And you'd have a very small group, small window of buyers looking at that to begin with, so, just some stats over there.
Being that they do, as you were saying, the more higher end of homes, why are they, or I guess, do they really need our help if that's kind of the way that they're going, like, in terms of with them covering the entire cost?
Well, Henry's done, I think he did pretty good to start with, like he was selling, what, three or four homes a year? And he does do good quality, uh, it's just the market has, since about the second week in June, has just put on breaks, and it's been.
And then as a developer too, sorry, Kim, as a developer too, he, you know, they have, they have major investments in, in infrastructure, um, you know, purchase the land. That's partly why, you know, there, there's lots in Whispering Creek and Whispering Greens area that are up for sale, that are owned by individuals. But those individuals theoretically have now bought the infrastructure, or helped pay for that infrastructure to a degree that's in the ground, where it's, as a developer, he has that infrastructure. Pat Wisner is another example, where he put in infrastructure in the ground, now he's sitting on that infrastructure plus the empty lot. So, you know, not to say that Pat might be interested in coming up with some kind of a deal too, but Lyle's got a bit of a point there that, you know, we could have three or four developers, you know, or two or three, and a couple of individuals that own one or two lots, you know, what does it, what do we depict, depict a developer for?
Yeah, and one of the things we also talked to Henry as, as a developer, that, you know, most people don't have, uh, is he's making investments in the community, and we made him aware of the show home, uh, policy that council put in place a couple of years ago that allows a developer to build a home, declare it as a show home, and, uh, the taxes are waived for a three-year period, so in case it didn't sell for three years. And that was the way council put incentive to the developers putting money into the community. Of course, he, he's aware of that now, but of course, uh, as he put in there, he's, he's already built and, uh, and paid taxes on a couple of those homes. He will be doing that in the future, this is just one of his ways. Long and short, he wanted to talk to council about, is, is there something that we can work together on to promote the community, really is what it came down to. And I told them to put a proposal together, this is something that they're going, as he said in his letter, they're gonna do it anyway. So it was just his request to council that if you wanna work together with that again, and if not, there's, he, he basically left the meeting saying they're, they're still trying to promote the community, just want everybody to.
I would be more comfortable if there was a way to get other developers involved in the whole process.
There's only the one other active developer right now, and that's Pat.
Yeah, yeah, cause if, if I own two lots, am I a developer? I mean, we know somebody that's writing this room that owns two lots, you know, does he classify as, you know, two, maybe we could approach him and see if he'd like to.
Maybe he'd like to invest in it.
Invest in this process, but, but I mean, I, I don't know what you, you know.
Yeah, this almost sounds like it's where we need an economic development person kind of leading the charge on this. Maybe as Paul says, checking in with other developers to see if they're interested, and then they come up with a, a solution and come to council, saying that they had fixed, lowered everyone they could think of in the community, and Henry ended up being the only one that was interested. Therefore, that makes our decision quite easy. Or if Henry plus two other people are interested, that also reduces the amount we have to pay.
Yeah, or, or else it goes the opposite way, they just increase the top number, which increases the, the, the fifty percent either way, so.
Yeah, and I guess for the purposes of this discussion, the defining between a property owner and a developer as a developer, uh, has invested in infrastructure. So really, in our community right now, uh, the actual investment in infrastructure would be Henry and Warren, and Pat Wisner, the only ones that have paid for roads and that sort of thing.
Him selling lots or, um, proceeding that we're supporting him in this, that that's turned tax base to, right?
Yeah, if a campaign like this, you know, sold one home, you know, on our behalf, it's a couple of year or two.
It's more in the tie year times.
In taxes and recovery, but, you know, um, again, it's, it's advertisements.
Or do we do it one year this way, and then the other ones go, hey, I wanna be part of that, and next year they join it, I don't know.
I mean, and as a community, we have done lots of different things over the years to try and promote our community too. This one here has a little different slant, because the developer's gonna have it, it's named more to one area of the community, but.
In his defense, he brought this forward, we didn't go actively looking for him for, we, uh, from an administration standpoint, looked at it as an opportunity for, it fell into that economic development side of things. He brought it forward, hey, there's no harm in asking council if this is something that they would like to improve with, we saw it as an economic thing. Based on, and I, and I guess, I, I do apologize, I looked at it very close-mindedly, that, you know, he's one of the only developers actively working in our community, so I didn't look at it as any person that owned property or trying to sell property.
But on the other hand too, quite often, I mean, if, if somebody comes down, we even look at one of these pieces of property, doesn't mean that it's not gonna drive by the other signs that are in town, and, you know, potentially see another piece of property that another person has for sale and purchases. So I mean, that's where the, the fifty percent investment by us potentially, hopefully gets them to, you know, our name out, gets them to come to our community, you know.
Limited administration costs with this as well, cause they administer the entire thing as well.
But again, I, I'm not, I'm not a big one in advertising, so I don't know whether this is a good bang for your buck or not, but I, you know.
There's, mind, our listings, when you put in a new listing, it automatically goes on the MLS system. We pay for listings on a per listing basis, and from there, it automatically goes into the credit magazine as well. We don't do radio advertising, so that's a little different, but, I mean, some of this is already involved in being a real estate associate, so.
So anyway, what's your thoughts, folks?
Should I stand? Can I call, I don't know if I should go down this one, because he's kind of my competition, a little bit.
But, but, but you, you have, you have to, you, you should have declared a community review before, um, plus, sorry.
This decision doesn't have a financial gain at all for you, for yourself. So, it's not carrying.
But that's a decision you have to make, not me. So, we need a motion, folks.
I will move that we give this a shot one time.
Okay.
Just amend that recommendation to approve.
And I'm not sure how much radio advertising does, but...
I don't know.
I don't know if you have to amend that or just the council for pristine home fairways proposal too, because this is a one-time proposal. To equally share the cost of advertising campaign for the town Vulcan to fund to be drawn from the economic development portion of two thousand and eighteen operation budget not to exceed six thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay. So, any questions or comments on Lorna's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you, thank you for the discussion. Okay, moving on to seven, seven. There was a request from SEWA to...
Yeah, I can, sorry that there was nothing in the agenda, it was verbal request that came in late Friday. SEWA will have a recording secretary for their AGM, Champion, on Friday, and I'm going to not tell you who suggested, but maybe we could help out with that function. I've asked Karen, she's more than willing to take that, take that job on for us if the council so approves. I know it's my job to approve what she does in a day, but basically, we're, it's, it's a request for services, so, yeah, from an outside entity, so it'd be nice to have council support, so that if somebody goes down to Champion and says, why is Vulcan's staff down here working for SEWA?
Have you talked to Champion? Like, we're not stepping on her toes?
Oh, no, this was a request directly from SEWA, they're just renting all from them, so...
So Karen has to promise that she won't jump ship and go over for SEWA?
She, she perked right up when I said that lunch would be involved, she could go home right after it was done. That kind of became a pretty good selling point, I think. Seems how she's going to be right next to home anyway.
Couple of months, culture.
I'll make the motion.
Approving it. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you.
I'll make, I'll notice one in there.
Okay, moving on to committee reports, eight, one. Any question on the May twenty-third minutes of... Yeah, well, we don't have that many meetings. Okay, move on to the second one, eight, two, which is ORSC. Any question on that one? Okay, moving on to Canadian Badlands. June twenty-eighth meeting. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the golf course. July seventeenth meeting. No questions, we'll move on to tourism's. Okay, no questions?
I just have one question on tourism. Are you quite, or is tourism quite involved with the Badlands now? Remember that was, was something we were trying to get going, you know, if it's being pursued?
I don't know if Barney's looking into that or not. We had talked about it at a meeting running, didn't we, not, joining up with Badlands?
Yeah.
Memory serves me right, I think Barney was gonna look into that.
We, we belong, we belong, it was just taking an active role, and we had Grant attend the Badlands conference with the Hillam, which originally had...
Yeah, no, I just wondered if...
Oh, sorry, Kim, sorry.
I was just kind of hoping that, because I think there was a lot about day tripping and stuff that I think Vulcan would really benefit from, so...
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that one? Okay, moving on to the second golf course one. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, apologies, sorry, eight, six, yeah.
Nancy's here, we don't want to miss her minutes.
Well, we have two reports from right on, so... Okay, moving on to elder abuse. I get picked on every time I come here, so...
No, that's Lorna and my department.
Yeah, I pick on you guys here, but when I come here, at the office, they always pick on me. They're much kinder to me. They respect their elders. All right, and now, moving on to the last golf course meeting, that golf course, they meet lots.
No, it's when I get the minutes.
Okay, any question on any of those? Somebody wish to move the committee reports? Laura? Any question on the motion? Hearing none, long bidder, it's carried. Okay, moving on to the councillor reports, Mr. Taylor.
I went to meeting with Barry Marshita, which you were posted over there. Needless to say, I went to a couple of MPC meetings and golf course meetings, which you've got, and I went down to the Grateful Cup. But she is going to make a presentation the next council meeting, so I won't steal her thunder on it. A little smile from Michelle there.
Who is she?
Carmen Pacheco.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't know. Yeah, we didn't know what it was.
George Lee.
Hi, can you have me?
Nothing, okay, thank you. Lyle?
I was at the MPC meeting on August twenty-first, and a special meeting on September fourth. September fifth, we had our Chamber of Commerce meeting. It was the first meeting since going dormant in April, and we had eighteen people show up at the meeting. We have a new executive committee and five directors. So, it was very positive, nice to see that go on again. And the next meeting will be held on October tenth. And on a side note, we had, including myself, three councillors at the meeting, which is kind of a scheduled local business support. And on September sixth, I attended the ORSC meeting in Lethbridge. There was a presentation there from Jamie Thomas, a staff person with ORSC regarding GIS, and I use the GIS on the town website and county website quite a bit for my work. And it's amazing the stuff that you can find on there, and I'll talk to our development officer sometime, because we could possibly even have, if we are the most technologically advanced town in Canada, we could put even more stuff on our sites. We just need someone to do it, is put in like our real property records and development permits, and all sorts of goodies on there, so I'll have to talk to her sometime to express my interest in that. Oh, and one more thing with ORSC, we usually have, you usually have to travel for the subdivision and development yield board training. Lethbridge will be hosting one here in the near future, I'd be to be announced just for general Melissa, less trouble. And that's it.
Okay, any questions, Laura?
I had tourism, and a large portion of this meeting was going over, like, the sales, how things have changed down at, at the track station. Sales were really, were up nicely. I think August was twenty-eight thousand, and, you know. There was only three of us there, so it wasn't a lot of in-depth conversation, just kind of going over our agenda. VBIT, I had same thing, there was only three of us there, so there was no quorum, but we did have a conversation about, they're looking into doing a kiosk, something similar along the lines of the TV at the Legion, where there's potentially advertising down one side, and community calendars, and having one kiosk in each municipality in the county, where businesses could advertise on that kiosk, like, everywhere in the county, and have community calendars, and like, say, for example, the fundraiser, information about that stuff all goes through all of those kiosks. So that's just kind of in the initial discussion stage, but that's what the whole conversation was about.
Okay, any question, Laura? Okay, moving on to Michelle.
On August twentieth, I had a services board meeting, and that was mostly centered around final planning and stuff for the casino. August twenty-first was the VCCC CR meeting, which is the elder abuse committee response group. And those, I think, will, because they're initially sort of, we're just in the setting up and planning and all that kind of part, so it's, they're pretty heavy, so still going through defining what the terms of reference mean in our community. Also going over, like, Claire's Home, their year one, and interim reports as well. We're really trying to utilize other programs in Claire's Home, it kind of mirrors nicely in terms of, you know, obviously, it's gonna look much different than Calgary or Lethbridge or a bigger city. So, that's been a really nice resource that, that we've had. And on September fifth, or sorry, on August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth was victim services casino, and actually Paul was there volunteering for that as well, so thank you, and it was successful.
Some of those else were there?
I guess on another shift, and, and Laura. Yeah, it was a really, really great turnout, like, it's a really fantastic opportunity, and, I mean, victim tourism is such an amazing cause. September fifth, attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting with Lyle. It was really awesome to see the turnout that it had. On September seventh, at the Resource Festival, I was there long term, I couldn't wait, but as an aside mark of it, they had a fantastic turnout. It was really, really good, you know, the place always, there was people constantly coming in and out, the amount of activities that they had for the kids and for the family, it was just incredibly put together, Wendy did an amazing job. So, as an aside, that was really cool. And then, on September seventh, attending the same presentation meeting with Paul the Grateful Cup, and, you know, I think he's absolutely right, and let her for her, gave that for the presentation, council.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Okay, Lorna?
I had the health and wellness, the end of August, I don't have the dates. As everyone has seen, there's a bit of a hole over at the hospital, so that's great. The fall event will be on November third, and I don't know if a theme has been decided yet, the event committee were working on that. They're working on staffing decision, Deb has resigned as, I, I don't, don't think there's an effective date, I think she'll just stay until they have someone in place, so they may do some restructuring. Heritage World Project is still ongoing. The, I went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting, but not as a councillor, I went as a business owner, and I went to the Resource Fair too, which also just as a member of the community, and it was amazing, for the number of hours they must have put in to do that, so that was, that was great to see a good turnout. I don't know if it continued on, I know starting at about three till I, I left shortly after five, it was quite busy, and I don't know if it continued on, but I literally had to park at the day here, because there was no parking in the parking lot, which is kind of a nice thing. The South Grove is this Wednesday, or Thursday, and I won't be around, so Michelle was gonna go as my alternate, and they were having the elected officials from the economic development, economic development for elected officials, I guess is the title of it, but that has been canceled, I got an email tonight saying that the presenter had some health issues, and so I don't know if anyone else was going to the, I think that was sent out to everyone if they wanted to attend that. And I think that was probably the same one we had down at BBDS a year or so ago, but anyhow, so anyhow, that one's not on, but the South Grove meeting will be. And I think that's all I had.
Colliers.
All colliers, no. If you're having, if you're having a headache, don't even think about it, but yes, we had a colliers meeting on with Friday, yeah, with Marcus Foundation, and we were presented with some of the information from the viability and feasibility study. It's ongoing, of course, and so we have lots to think about and start moving forward, so I think there'll be further discussions, and of course, there's more information to be collected, and, yeah, there could be for that.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, I guess on to me, I was at the colliers one, two, there's four hundred and eighty-three pages of information that they sent out to us.
Weekend to read.
Yeah, and reading of it. And so, like Lorna said, there, you know, it's an ongoing thing, and hopefully there'll be some positive stuff come out once it's, it's completed. I've also gone, have gone to two meetings on the hospital itself, like, on the building committee, and so I have minutes of those two meetings. The, the, the best part of the whole thing so far is that they, they still anticipate, anticipated turnover of the facility in November of two thousand and nineteen. So, you know, almost a year from now, they're hoping that the facility will be finished, and they have run into some difficulties, so if you see that there's, you know, it looks like there's nothing going on, they're, they ran into some topsoil that they never anticipated to be as quite, as much as it was there, so they're looking for some dirt, so if anybody's got any good dirt in their backyard, I think they figure they need a hundred, hundred super Bs full of dirt, so if you put it in your pocket, you're gonna have to start carrying it out pretty quickly. But like I said, the biggest thing is, is, is the timing of it, so it looks like it's on, on schedule, I'm gonna go. Due to our, our friend to the south, they anticipate a least a forty-five to a hundred-thousand-dollar increase in steel, so we can send them all a thank you very note to our friends in the south for this deal going up. Other than that, you know, like I said, with this dirt issue, depending on where they can get the dirt, you know, how much it's gonna cost to, to move that part of the project forward. I went to Mayor's Reeves, there was a gentleman that spoke on nurses, the nurses, nurse practitioners, and changing the process of how they can get funded. Other than that, that was probably the most money-bending discussion, really, was on the nurse practitioners. There's, right at the moment, they don't have a method of billing other than working, you know, through a clinic type of thing, so right at the moment, I don't think we probably Right at the moment, I don't think we probably have any need for a nurse practitioner in the community, but a lot of small communities are could be a goal asset. Let's see what else, oh, we had a SEWAT meeting in Three Hills and so there's been some really positive stuff come out of the letters that we sent to the minister. You can tell elections around the corner. They're getting more interested in different programs. This Friday, there is a SEWAT AGM in Champion at twelve o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty is, yeah, of course, for lunch, so if you can let let her let us know how many would like to attend, so they can kind of. Know how much food to get for for your for the meal. And if you can't make it to the meal, you know, you're more welcome to come and listen to the rest of it. Yeah, met with the A U A, same with most of us, it was, I thought it was kind of neat to to visit with Barry. On on how he perceives some of the things moving forward, especially I D I D.
I M B Ts.
I M B Ts and all those, how you know, we need to stand up for our municipalities. Other than that, yeah, I think that was pretty well it for me. Any questions on? Very none, you shall suddenly wish to move the verbal reports. Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Any other? That's very, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Minister's report, he's got an action list there for us. Any questions on the? Twelve items or fifteen items that he had on his list?
Finally got the gray to work.
I thought something was wrong with this whole screen, it was dark.
Okay, any questions?
Please add in Gazette, is that?
We it's a part of the M G A, when we do tax recovery, it still has to be advertised in Gazette.
Cause that used to be the newspaper in Edmonton a hundred and fifty years ago.
It still is, it is a requirement of the M G A that it be advertised there, so.
But isn't it, isn't it a provincial?
Yes.
It's got provincial status, I think, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think originally it's true, it was a newspaper name.
Oh, is it?
I think so.
It is the go-to advertising provincially, I guess.
Okay, any questions on any Kim's action items? If not, we'll move into the C A O's report.
Very straightforward, unless you have any questions, I, of course, was gone for two weeks in there, so it left kind of a. Hole in the middle, the C I B C reps that are here were just basically here to tell us the services that they can provide. Yeah, there's nothing. Nothing really. Question with resident about drainage, that was a long first avenue self out there. Again, discussed, he was happy when he laughed. And a. I guess the most notable meeting would be the Regional Emergency Management. They've basically completed all the audits on all the communities in the county now, so we met with the gentleman, did our audits and. Have discussed where the regional approach, we broke down and how we continue working towards that. One of the discussions that was had with that was the Emergency Management Agency. Of course, that's councils sit on that committee. And we meet twice a year with the communication meeting, so we're looking at how we can try to coordinate that together. We're gonna put together a presentation for the communication meeting that's coming up in Myl. On how we'd like to move forward, really, the first time that we went in, Arrowhead and Myl didn't join as part of that. We're hoping that now, some of the differences that Arrowhead and Myl had with the county have kind of. Gone away, so the negotiation for that to actually have joined as part of region. I believe, I don't wanna speak out of turn, I believe the plan right now is to most likely apply for some grant funding to do a regional plan. And then enact the agency from that. It's not, it's not dead, we're still working towards it, it's been a long, been working on this for an awful long time. There seems to be interest by the by the villages now that they've had an audit done and realize that what the benefit is of forking together. We'll get some movement, hopefully, so that's probably the most notable. Bunch Karen and I continue to take the I compass training and continue to jump ahead of what they want us to be doing, so. Of course, this meeting, we prepared a bunch of reports in the I compass and like to export to the agenda and won't let us do that yet, so. We got to print them off and then scan them. But yeah, other than that, we're pretty straightforward. Unless anybody has any questions.
Did you have a good holiday?
I did. Good gift giveaway part that we missed last time, that was close.
Okay, so we'll move on to the Development Officers' report.
My chair Nancy? Oh, my chair. Notable for the historical society that. Nancy had a chance to meet with them, they're gonna, it looks like they're gonna move forward with replacing these shingles to the cedar shakes and. They're exploring grant funding that's available that was identified through that meeting and then looking at. Removing paint, doing some repairs and then going back to a linseed based oil paint for the building, so. And of course, they identified that there would possibly be some grant funding available to help with that as well, so. So they were gonna take that back to their meeting and. Other than that, the M P C, based on timing, the pop-up patio. Has been asked for request to extend to the thirtieth of September and because we weren't having a meeting until today. The M P C had.
Any questions on the Development Officers?
I'd like to know about the lobster monsters.
They were at the.
This is the hot.
Yeah, they were, they were in a in a trailer at the Essel gas park this weekend, yeah.
Okay, moving on to Public Works.
Before we get in there, Stu asked me to pass on the the top patch on that Main Street entrance, that experimental patch that they did. They came back and did second coat on it at no charge and it seems to be holding up very well, so he's pretty happy with that. So he wanted me to pass that on to council for those that haven't driven over top of it. The old water treatment plant is scheduled to come down today. They did some work on the north side of the building, but of course, they found out when they got there that the gas line. The meter had been removed, but the gas line was still alive to the end of the building and they didn't really wanna knock, have a random brick come down and knock that off, so. They're working around that with that code. The arena, though, and worth noting that the contractor that was doing. Land near the excavation at the hospital was the one that was doing, knocking down the old water treatment plant, cause he has the equipment available here and had some time to do some work, so. Gave us a pretty decent deal on that. The arena condenser is scheduled to go in today, so they've started on that one portion of note for that when they bleed off the ammonia. If bleated into a tank, they need to have a sixty-foot buffer, so they're gonna block. That driveway that goes through there, but there it is, just so that they need all the safety code stuff, so. There'll be a temporary closure of that back alley portion, just and they're planning it for the.
Their settlement we're saying with.
Absolutely. The last one is they're in the middle of right now of dealing with a major wet water break on Second Street North. And it's between three and four hundred rock block and for those historians in the crowd, this is the third one in the same spot, so. We are aware of how to deal with it, but it's every time that it happens, it's a huge water break and. It does impact quite a few homeowners, the last time we had one there, we worked straight through the night, had it back up by eight o'clock in the morning, so. This one's, I'm not sure if they're doing the same thing, theirs, they. They're not coming in till tomorrow, yeah, they had, we couldn't get equipment, the equipment we needed was not available right away, so. But they got the water down and I talked to them and asked, told them that if they needed anything, I'd be available to help and haven't heard anything yet, so. That's and then of course, Stu's report, which. If there's any questions, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, any questions? Okay, moving on to the Community Services Report. Any question on any that?
Do we have numbers from previous years?
Who?
Do I just wonder how that? Yeah, I don't know if she does or not, I could ask and see.
I think she keeps track of the year.
She does, yeah. I was in attendance for the bubble party and they got that machine working well, there was, there was bubbles flying all over town. Any of the kids? I, they lifeguard, they actually worked well enough that they had to have the lifeguard team, well, so they could see the kids. It was, it was a lot of fun, of course, I got out of there fairly quickly because all I had to do was mention that we could go ride on the combine and that the bubbles weren't as interesting as. Or we could do the rest of the afternoon, so.
Okay.
But yeah, it was, it was really successful, the pool was full and could a lot of people.
Any questions on the Development's report? Moving on to the C P O's.
We were informed that the investigator has finished all of his interviews for his appointments over to C P A, and it should come fairly quickly. They, they do independent background checks.
On the digital speed signs, will, did he put in the budget this year for for solar charge or something, or?
Most likely another set of batteries. The batteries were, they originally thought that the signs had to be taken down and then taken back and charged, they don't, the batteries can actually pop up. So most likely, we're gonna look for a second set of batteries and just have them here all the time where they can just drive out, check, change them on once a week.
That's fine, I just, I've noticed that some other communities that have have solar panels on them. You know, but I don't know if it's an asset, you know, well, it's an asset, I guess, but I don't know how much of a pain it is.
Yeah, we can look into the cost of that.
I know Nan has purchased a set now too and they've got it on the twenty-sixth Avenue up there. And so it's, I think like Paul says, you know, you definitely see, I mean. When it was on Main Street, there's even a resident that, you know, brings up their lawn chairs and sits there and watches as people get by. So it it obviously, you know, has garnered some effect for for some people and I think it's kind of nice to see, so we'll see.
Potentially lower.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on the C P O's? Okay, moving on to the Fire Chiefs. No other questions on any of those? Somebody moved reports? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Very none, all paper? It's Karen.
By direction for all original.
I was gonna, I was gonna say that was only one that, you know, it's not really on our agenda, I don't know how we should maybe.
You can add it to the next meeting if you would like something.
So we can either discuss Bob's presentation or like Kim said, bring it back to the next meeting and have it brought back in and. We could maybe. Do some thinking of of minimums, I thought my five thousand dollars was quite. Quite nice. But you know, come up with a, you know, a different idea, if you have some ideas or or else we could discuss it tonight, whatever you want.
It's not that far to the next meeting.
No, I mean, and again, too, you know, if the administration has some thoughts of some of the suggestions that, you know, Bob has of. Of how we can alter it and.
We can discuss and present a report to council for their information.
And again, if you have some ideas, you could, you know, old man mentioned Kim or. Or Nancy is is our clerk that gets us into trouble on this one department. But no, again, if we have some ideas or thoughts of of how it could work and. I'm sure that every resident that has a vacant piece of property has questions on.
It didn't even sound like it was money so much that was the cause or the question, it was more that he wanted it to be the selling feature for his. Units, now, I don't know anything about real estate, so I don't know if that's.
He can, he can get a value based on. The income approach, which.
Bob, please.
If you don't have any income, then that gets you the value, then you have to go for like a replacement. Approach. For valuing it, but then. And we ran this days into instances where certain. That hasn't given a fair market value, I'll just say that, so it's based on the information provided, we can take that back and provide a, you know, report. To council for the next council meeting, based on the effect that this could have on on property value and. And the effects that it has on multiple businesses, not just.
Well, and and there's truth to that too, I mean, you know, as an example, we have some. People that own fourplexes and twoplexes appreciate them, they fall more in residential, but yet they are a commercial. Business, you know, and sometimes, you know, you can see some of those facilities that have four or five suites or or. One or two suites empty, you know, how? When do they bring this in, when they don't, Laura's suggestion too is 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 an option, you know. You use my five thousand dollar, you know, to turn it off and five thousand to turn it back on, they might say, well, geez, you know, I'll pay the seventy dollars a a month. You know, that's far cheaper than my Tom Grant's ten thousand dollar.
Could it? Sorry.
What?
In terms of like that's. Determining, you know, maybe reaching out and talking to the different businesses that are in like commercial properties that that would apply to as well and finding out. Is this singular or is this really affecting everybody across the board? And you know, just kind of reaching out for feedback to say like, hey, does this affect? You or you have the same opinion, are they different, like is there any? To see if this is a widespread problem, because if there's six business owners that are, you know, contacted and five of them. Are in the same boat and have the same feeling as Bob, I mean, that drastically changes things if, you know, we reach out to six and none of them do. Do you know what I mean?
But which six do you pick on, do you pick on the six that, well, I'll pick on Wolf's Hardware, I'll pick on Furniture Villa, I'll pick on Magnus and Realtor, I'll pick on. You know, businesses that chances of them being empty, or do you go and find somebody like Billy Yee and. You know, some of our other ones that have no intention of ever renting them out anyway, you know, but yet they still have that service to that facility. You know, the 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 one issue I have is that all of a sudden, you know, is this just a one op for a short period of time or is this longer? So now all of a sudden, we have to increase everybody else's costs on their minimums for sewer and water, just because somebody hasn't rented out their facility. You know, and I appreciate it affects the commercial differently than it does residential, but there's how many residential lots in our community that, you know, potentially. Could fall into this category where they say, you know, I've got a house that's been up for sale for for four years and it hasn't sold, nobody's living in it right at the moment, I, you know. I would like the same category for residents, you know, so.
So and something that's worth putting to that discussion is this isn't a one-off. So and something that's worth putting to that discussion is this isn't a one-off. When we brought this to council, you can't look at it as, as one fee. And that's what it's being presented to you as, is it's one fee. It's not. The water bill is two different fees. We have the fee through the distribution system that brings the water to your property and you pay exactly what the water commission bills us for that. On the sewer end of things, we have a rate and that rate, all that entire rate is calculated on the amount of services that we have split up into paying our loan payments from the lagoon. So if a building goes vacant, that line is still there, it's still, and we still have to pay the loan payment. That's why it was set up the way it was. Because in the past, and I'll, I'll use the water because it's the best example of it. The water lines, we took a base rate of what it costs to pay for the water distribution system. We had, when we did this, we had this much that we needed to pay per year. We realized that in October, we had 30 utilities shutting their stuff off and we weren't billing them. Water lines still went into their house, we were still having water breaks in front of their house, we were still maintaining the system, running the pumps, all of that. But because they went south and could afford to do that or afford to own a commercial building or whatever that is, they weren't paying for it because they asked us to shut it off. That really wasn't fair to the other taxpayers that now were picking up that load for those six months that they were gone or for the year that that building was vacant. We, the residents of the town of Vulcan have no control over the vacancy of that building. And I'll use Bob's as an example for the basis of this, please don't put this in the end of paper, Stephen. But Bob, when was the last time you saw a for rent sign on this building or active marketing? By us reducing those costs for him, he's, it basically just wants the utility bills to go away while it's vacant. And he's fine with them coming back when he has a renter because he builds it directly to the renter. So he wants them to go away when they're vacant, wants them back when they're full. But when it's vacant, the rest of the taxpayer shouldn't be taking up that bill because it's still there. We're still paying the loan payment on the, on the lagoons. We're still paying for Public Works to take care of the distribution system. They're fixing a water break right now. That's all fixed into that cost that we equally share amongst our 1,000 utilities that we have in town. The MPC decides on a building like Bob's when he takes the development permit. So he takes a development permit out for a building and says, I'm gonna have this and it's gonna have four rental bays or six rental bays. The MPC looks at it based on that development permit or our development officer and says, it's like four rental bays. They have four utilities. If it was an office building where they could share one bathroom and it was six, the MPC might say, well, it only has one utility that goes to it. So that's where we gave Bob the option. You can change the zoning in your building, which he doesn't want to do. He still wants four rental properties there. Like, we've tried to give him all the, at the end of the day, he does not want a utility bill if there's nobody there to pay it. And he has a good argument, it drops the value of this building because, yeah, he's paying it.
I guess what I don't understand is, okay, so it's gonna be, say, $72 a month per unit and you figure that out and then we charge that much per year and maybe double it so that we are covering those costs and he's still willing to pay it like, or I would say that that would have to be an option because not, I suspect he might be the only one that would ever want to.
Pay a $500 shut-off fee.
Yeah, go that route. So I'm just wondering if we can recoup the money no matter what, plus maybe little, what difference does it make?
It'd be, yeah, really.
Yeah, I just.
It'd be a change of policy in administration, like, we'd have to keep trying.
And it would be a little bit of a nightmare, but I suspect this might be one person wanting this and no one else would ever be interested.
And the bad thing about too, like I said, you know, when do you bring it back on and when do you shut it off? I mean, so, you know, if, if you say $72 a month, you know, like I said, there's 840, you know, 44 dollars.
But he pays it upfront.
No, I appreciate that. Plus, you know, if he wants to turn it back on, you know, you have another administrative charge to bring the system back on.
But we built that in.
Oh, I know.
And now we are at your $5,000.
That's where I'm at. See, my $5,000 wasn't so far off.
No, but what I'm saying is like, I think.
I've got Gudo on my side too.
You've got who?
Gudo, he's that big, Italian big guy that goes and beats the heck out of you if you don't pay your bills.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. But anyway, I mean, it's so, I mean, if you want, like Kim can try to.
The hard part, the hard part with determining that is, is basically trying to base how long it'll be vacant for.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna take a stab in the dark. So that, really, I would like some feedback on that because, like I said, if, if you would have told me that some of the buildings on Main Street were gonna be vacant for 10 years, probably would argue that if you set this policy up, some of them haven't. Some people here are vacant for a year. We have some that have the potential to be in vacant for a lot longer as well.
You know, and again, too, you know, I mean, this is not where it's gonna end too. I mean, taxation is gonna be the, another issue that potentially, so I mean, there's, you know, the utilities, you know, and potentially taxation or loss in, in income. So potentially long-term, those are other issues that we need to concern about. And the problem with taxation is that the educational portion of the tax is something that you cannot deal with anyway. And so, I mean, the county's running into that same category right now where there are organizations in the county that are paying taxes, that haven't paid their taxes for a period of time because they're either defunct or whatever. The counties have to pay the educational tax on their behalf. So I mean, it's, it's a ball that unfortunately we're dealing with because of the economy.
And there is another consideration, just so that you're aware of it before we bring it back. But Bob talked about how it affected the value. Similar situation, I had a conversation with a property owner that did have vacancies and they reassess properties. So that could be another suggestion to Bob is, is that, you know, if he feels that it's negatively impacting the assessment of his building and on a taxation side, he could ask Brian to reassess it.
So anyway, I'm not sure which one, if you want to do more discussion on tonight or, excuse me, or whether you wanna get Kim to try and come up with some suggestions and bring it back or?
Well, Kim comes up with pros and cons.
I mean, and I feel, I really do see the merit of taking a look at it, but I can also see the potential that there's gonna be lots of people there and say, you know, and what do you classify as, you know, so if it's an empty building, it doesn't need water and services to it, you know? Then all of a sudden, you allow them to use it to store stuff, becomes a storage shed, you know?
With the charge to turn the water on in the old water pipe, it's been down for how many years?
Right. And it, under its policy, it falls in as soon as it gets turned on again. It will fall into the policy of paying. Because that was the problem we had a bunch of. And this is, this is the, this is the underlying heart of what we were trying to solve, is there's vacant buildings that have utilities hooked to them and the sewer lines still work, water lines still work. And we're paying, we paid to put them in there or are paying loan payments. We're not receiving anything from, from those taxpayers. So if it was in, if it was all based, put into the general taxation, then it's absolutely fine, but we don't do that. We charge per our utilities, so we have to charge evenly and fairly.
And we did look at the garbage on, based on taxation too, right? And you saw how some businesses would be paying, you know, 20, $30,000 for garbage pickup where another business would pay, you know, virtually nothing. So I mean, so assessment's not always the fairest method on the utility side of something, you know?
And so that you are aware, I guess, in all fairness, Nancy and I have been working on doing a similar model for the sewer. So a lot of communities are using a base rate of X amount of water. So your sewer is sold for a person that uses 100,000 gallons of water a day, they, they use our system more than somebody that doesn't. So it's based on a percentage of your water use plus that basing, plus that fee that pays the loan payment. So we're looking at somewhat similar for that because we have some, we have a, well, when you look at our fee schedule, go home and have a chance and go back and relook at the bylaw that you passed for the sewer one, this long with different rates. We would like to get that so it's to the same rate for everybody, you know? It's this much per, for usage. We've been working on that model, we've got something that's working fairly close. We keep plunking numbers in and trying to refine it, so. And to be completely honest, our base model that we're working on, I should probably turn that recording off, but the base model we're working on is the average home. It wouldn't change, you know, we want it to, because we're still trying. But our sewer lagoon costs, when you go through our budget, we're subsidizing it and we're still not covering the cost of the loan. So we're trying to slowly incrementally bring that back up so it sustains itself. Because at the end of the day, we want our water, our sewer, our garbage to sustain itself. What you can do is you could give direction to bring a report back with a recommendation to the next meeting, very, very similar to what Greg did for.
I, so.
And do you mind if we put it back up under the delegation?
I think so.
In the minutes so that it's for continuity wise, that it be, that it be put under 4.1, that Lorna makes most of the direct administration to bring back a report at the next council meeting?
Any comments or questions? If not, no favorite? I guess that's one question that probably we need to, over time, you know, if we have something that comes from delegations and presentations, do we have a category under
Add it for discussion.
New and unfinished business, you know? If there is a delegation, you'd add a area or discussion on the delegation's report or something else so that you could, because really, we don't have another area, we bring it back on.
It makes sense to refer back to a delegation.
Yeah, you can follow it forward with just a brief discussion and really on a lot of delegation stuff, just looking at the procedural stuff that we've been doing lately. Most of the situations would lead to a quick discussion, what direction to administration to bring back a report. At most of them, unless it needed immediate action, which at that point you would make to disagree.
So you, Greg would have to.
They leave the meeting, you open the discussion or if they want to sit part of it because it's open to council, you could hopefully discuss it.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So you want to adjourn? Oh, Michelle? Any question? Very none, all bitter.